Well, uh, let's get started and we'll start as we always do with a prayer from our chaplain, Chaplain Taylor. And, uh, and then after that, we'll have the pledge of allegiance. So Chaplain Taylor, if you're ready, then commissioners will get started. Chaplain Taylor, are you there?
He is, sir.
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, go ahead. Thank you.
I'll pray again.
Okay.
Lord, thank for this privilege we have today in behalf of the county commissioners, Lord, as they've prepared for this meeting today. We pray you give them the wisdom they need, Lord. I pray you keep them healthy and well, dear Lord. Blessings upon them, Lord. And thank for the work they do for this county, Lord. Blessings upon them in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. All right, the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic, to the fans, one nation.
Under God.
Under God, individual.
Thank you. Chaplain Taylor, was your second prayer better than your first one?
It was about the same.
About the same. And, uh, thank you for being with us during this special call meeting. Hope you're well. Are you doing well?
Yes, sir. I'm doing well.
All right, we'll continue to take care of yourself because we need you, okay?
All right, keep me posted.
All right, buddy.
Thank you.
All right, um, so we don't have any minutes that we're messing with now. So we're gonna, we've got some additions to add. So first of all, we're gonna, um, I've got some good instructions here from Carolyn who keeps me in line. We're gonna add to the regular agenda for discussion, uh, Human Resources has requested to create two additional custodial positions as a result of the increased volume of custodial needs due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, the expansion narrative and expansion worksheet for this request have been provided for you. According to Facilities Management Director Don Brango, one position will remain at the courthouse to assist with the additional courthouse cleaning requirements when courts resume, uh, part-time next week, uh, next Monday, June 1. Second position will work with current janitorial staff for the additional required cleaning procedure. So uh, without objection, I'll add that as, uh, item 2A. And then, uh, I have two more. Uh, let's see, uh, so this has to do with our board meeting, uh, for June 1 uh, for the purpose of, uh, holding a budget work session. We'll have two items that we would add, add here. We'll schedule a meeting for June 1, 2020 at 1:00 PM for the purpose of holding a budget work session. So that'll be uh, item 2B. 2C would be to schedule a public hearing for June 1, 2020 at 6:00 PM to receive citizen input regarding the proposed budget. And then, uh, I'll read this into that motion, uh, that I would, uh, move that Rowan County schedule the public hearing uh, for the proposed 2021 fiscal budget year budget on Monday, June 1, 2020 at 6:00 PM, subject to the public hearing comment period remaining open until 5:00 PM on Friday, June 5, 2020. In order to give everyone an opportunity to make comments known to the board. The length of comment for each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board and the comments will be restricted to the subject of the hearing as advertised. And so that'll be part of, uh, item 2C. So, uh, those three things I'm, I'm asking to add. Are there any other addition? Well, they're and so, you know, we've received, um, uh, written consent from Mike Caskey, uh, as per the rules to add these items to the agenda. So do we have a motion to accept today's agenda as amended? All right, thank you. A motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so the agenda's been approved. And so do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? That's not been changed, but motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
All right, all right, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Very much. All right, so, uh, item number two, we'll turn over to the county manager, uh, to discuss and adopt a plan for, uh, coronavirus virus relief fund, uh, manager. And you're, you're muted. So, you know, I know you're getting good at this, but.
Okay. Good a, good afternoon. I think I'm so this is the presentation for the coronavirus, uh, relief fund. Just can go to the next slide. So House Bill, um, 104, which became law, uh, appropriated $150 million to counties that met the criteria. Uh, the letter from, from the governor's office was dated, uh, well, it was from the, the state budget director. Uh, his office was dated May 6, 2020. And, um, the state would like for us to present a plan by June 1, 2020. In, in the letter, we, uh, we learned that there had been an appropriation. There was an attachment to the letter. Rowan County is expected to receive $2,561,818. And this is, uh, federal money. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I can hear you. Sorry about that. Okay. Uh, it's federal money, but it is, is going through the state, uh, and the state will send it to the counties. The money that we receive, it's required that it's obligated by December 30th, 2020. Okay, next slide. Counties may share this with municipalities, however, they're not required to. And one important piece of, of the law that was passed, um, and I'll just read it. It's fairly short, is counties and municipalities are liable to the state for any misuse or mishandling of these funds and subject to clawback and other appropriate measures, including the reduction or elimination of other state funds. Any local government officer, official, or employee who violates this section shall, shall be subject to a civil action by the state and held personally liable to reimburse the state. So the, the plan that we, we are going to propose, um, would be submitted, uh, to the state by June 1, and that doesn't mean it's the final plan. We can revise the plan, um, at any time. And, um, however, a part of, part of the plan is that municipalities would benefit from the plan. And we would recommend that there would be an inter-local government agreement between the municipalities signed by the elected official, attorney, manager, and finance officer agreeing to strict terms. And also that they would agree to be personally liable to the county in the event that the funds aren't spent, um, appropriately. So what, what is appropriate? The, uh, the, the letter from the state budget director gave guidance, uh, that, uh, received from the federal governments. And, and I'll just briefly go over that. It suggests that eligible spending must be directly related to expenditures incurred to address COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, the categories include medical expenses related to the expenses of public hospitals and clinics, establishment of temporary medical facilities, COVID-19 testing, and public telemedicine capabilities. Public health expenses such as the acquisition of personal protective equipment and other medical supplies, disinfection of public areas and other facilities such as nursing homes, and expenses for public safety measures, including expenses for quarantining. Payroll expenses for public safety or healthcare employees whose services are substantially dedicated to responding to the COVID-19 emergencies. Emergency expenses of actions that facilitate compliance with the COVID-19 public health measures such as teleworking, distance learning, food delivery, paid sick, and family and medical leave act for public employees, expenses for maintaining prisons, and expenses for protecting the homeless population, and expenses associated with the provisions of the economic support in connection with COVID-19 public health emergency. So the, the plan, I, I know what, what I just read, um, was a lot, but we have, we have looked at it. We have studied it. We've been on, uh, conference calls. We've sought opinions from the school of government. And currently, it, it's very restrictive how, how this money can be spent. Again, just, just to say again that as I read earlier, that as, as we understand the law, that both the elected officials and appointed officials can be held personally liable for the way the money is spent. So we have came up with a, with a plan, uh, to propose to the board. And I'd like to point out that, that the board is, is the one that has the ultimate authority to approve the plan. So you, you can change this. Um, i- if there's things you don't like, you know, that, that's fine. It is the board's authority to do that. If you want to think about it a couple of days or weeks, we'll go ahead and submit it as is. If you approve it, then we can change it again and, and submit a revised plan. But as I understand it, the board would approve the plan. And once you approve the plan, then staff, we would be held responsible to make sure that it's spent appropriately. So you've, if you approve this plan, after that, I think you've kind of met your obligation, uh, specifically the plan we've la- laid out, I think, meets the, the strict letter, uh, of the guidance that we received. There may be some exceptions and we may get feedback from the states saying that it's not. But once the board approves the plan, then it will be up to staff, uh, to make sure that we follow the plan the board approves. Now, there is one little small problem with this plan. There's a shortfall in it. And there's also a agenda item we added to this meeting that also will be, you know, related directly to COVID-19, which includes adding two gen- janitorial staff to help clean, um, various parts of the county. So, you know, it, it's going to go up, but there's some parts of it that may go down. And there's a small note at the bottom of the page that says it's an estimate, but I, I'm going to go over each one, uh, with you in the following slides. And, but, so general government. Well, before I, before I go, go over them, let me explain the way that this, this spreadsheet or chart works. Um, in the far left-hand side, you will have, um, a department in the item, which is a description of how the money will be spent. And then the columns, at the top to the right, um, you'll see county expense, shared expense, municipal expense, and estimated total. So county expense is what we estimate to be, you know, that would solely benefit the county. In, well, in, in large part benefit the county in responding to COVID-19. Shared initiative, we believe, is something that, that all, that the county and the municipalities, uh, you know, would, would jointly, uh, receive benefits. And then the municipal expense would be a direct expense, which would be direct, uh, municipal benefit in dealing with COVID-19. So the first one, uh, which is county, general construction for county departments is half a million dollars. That's just a, an estimate. And that's for, um, you know, possibly petitions, possible drive-through, you know, telecom systems in, 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 in different areas of the county. That would, uh, reduce or, or, or help to eliminate the transmission of COVID-19 currently and during a second or third wave. Uh, the next line is architect fees. We've got that in a shared initiative because, uh, we've, we've also budgeting, uh, money to where the architect can make a recommendation and design for municipalities. And I'll get to that after I cover the next two, two lines. The next one is 200,000. That's for general construction for courthouse facilities. Uh, clerk of court, judges, courtrooms, district attorney, probation, sheriff, and common areas that we're required to provide space for. That would be to upfit, upfit and renovate those areas to, to eliminate, um, or reduce the transmission of COVID-19. And then the 250,000 below that is reimbursement for expenses from March 1, 2020 to May 30th, 2020, that the county has incurred and/or municipalities have incurred. The very bottom at the right, the 300,000, that is municipal renovations and outfit. That's in the municipal expense. What, what we have, uh, I, I guess we have in plan, if, if, if it works this way and is, is approved, would be that the architect come in and look at all the county departments, go look at the courthouses, meet with each municipal mayor and manager, and look at things that can be done in, in individual areas to reduce or eliminate the transmission of COVID-19. And then we would have one big, um, bid package and one contractor would get, get the job and would do the work, both uh, for the county, the courthouse, which we're responsible for it, uh, anyway, and municipalities. So it would be, uh, one job. We have released the RFQ for the architect and, and we have a very, um, aggressive schedule that was published in that RF, RFQ. And one of the qualifications and something we're looking for is someone that has experience in courthouse, because that's a large portion of, of where the design work may be done. The next column or the next section, uh, general human resources. So if you look to the far left side of the page, um, you'll see the word general human resources. And then there's, there's three, um, rows below that. The first one is direct COVID-19 employee, uh, pay expenses. That's for the county. This is for what di- different people interpret, interpret it different ways, but we're, we're using a fairly small number. And this plan, what we're saying is, is that we'll only go to reimburse the county for employees that spent almost, if not all, 100% of their time, um, handling, um, COVID-19. The next line is, uh, for county only expense. And that is COVID-19-related FMLA, uh, and sick pay expenses. So in the past or in the future, if the county has or has had any, um, you know, leave expenses due to COVID-19, and as you, you, you may go back, uh, a couple of, uh, several, several weeks ago when we passed the, you know, the, the, the leave acts, that there's certain, uh, things that trigger leave, uh, for employees. You know, it could be that childcare, uh, is an example. Or, um, a loved one could have COVID-19 or whatever the circumstance. If they meet that criteria, it is an eligible expense. And we would be asking, as a part of our plan, asking the federal government to reimburse, reimburse us for that. Municipal, we've budgeted 100,000, uh, which is about half of what the county, uh, we budgeted. And so, uh, as you'll see, the total, uh, for the general human resources is 600,000. Now, with that said, I mean, this is all an estimate. We, we may not have 100,000 dollars worth of COVID-related FMLA and sick pay expenses. So this is just a, you know, a proposed budget, but, but I do think there'll be some. You know, if, 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 if we recall back to the beginning, which seems like so long ago, but uh, of when the pandemic started, if an individual was tested, it might be 10, 12, 13 days before the test came back. So whether or not the individual had coronavirus or not, um, they may have been out of work during that time period if they had been exposed, um, or had taken the test, whether or not they had, uh, tested positive or not. So if you'll go to the next slide, thank you. I won't go into all the, all the details of DSS and health. Um, a lot of it's very technical. I will highlight one really important line item. And that is the COVID-19 testing with Mako. So if you go to the left, which would be your left side of the screen, um, under health department, almost near the bottom, where you see estimated total, if you count, count up one, two, three lines, you'll see COVID-19 testing contract with Mako. That is to test, um, citizens. And I believe that 212,000, $500 is enough to test 2,500, um, citizens. Uh, there is also many other, uh, you know, there's other agencies, um, that are doing tested, but this is a contract to do testing on specific days.
Aaron, can I interject here?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just so the other commissioners know that Mako was not only the lowest cost provider, but they're doing, providing the tests and testing. And the other two providers, we're going to charge 100 dollars a test and do no testing. So I think this is a really good deal for us.
Yeah, and I, and I, wh- while we're on this, this topic, I know y'all, everyone has see, received lots of emails, but th- this is not the only testing. Uh, it is just some of the testing. And this particular testing at this time, uh, if my recollection is correct, will take, take place at the West End Plaza every Monday starting June 1. Uh, and then, like I said, there's other testing centers and, and o- other locations. But every Monday, um, starting June 1, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, they'll be testing at the West End Plaza. So, um, next slide, please. Okay, uh, information technology, um, this is 258,000. This is for telework expansion. This probably, um, this may or may not be approved, uh, by the state. And if, if we were to reduce this budget, it would probably be the first thing we would reduce. Because the other thing, you know, a- a- as we continue to go through, go through, you'll see that, um, this may not be the most, um, pressing matter, all, however, a very important matter in public awareness. I mean, our health department, IT and EMS, uh, and our GIS, they have all done a tremendous job in public awareness. Uh, you know, they've taught us how to use Zoom. They have, they have a, they have a hub on the website, and I think they've just done an excellent job. I don't want to mention anybody's name because I'll leave somebody out. And there's so many employees that have done such a good job with this. And to only ask for 6,900 dollars to go towards what all they've done, you know, is a very small amount of money. I mean, they, I just can't emphasize enough what an extraordinary job all those folks have done together. Emergency services, um, the big one here is, uh, the personal protective equipment. That's 400,000. Um, that's for county departments, municipalities, and courthouses. That may be, um, significantly more than we'll actually spend. A lot of that depends on, um, you know, the demand, the cost, um, and how much, you know, what, how much personal protective equipment is actually being used. And with the, the courthouse, um, as they, um, you know, as the, a- as days goes on, and, you know, things change there, we may see a significant increase in the use of personal protective equipment. So this is just an estimate. Uh, it may be way, way more than we actually need. At, at this time, it's just, is, is, it's hard to know. Uh, this includes, you know, your mask, gloves, uh, hand sanitizer, hand sanitizer stations, um, you know, that you can walk up to, uh, in departments or in, in common areas and utilize hand sanitizer. Also Clorox wipes, which are, um, almost as difficult to, to procure today as they were a month ago. You know, so, um, this may be, you know, a whole lot more than we actually spend, but it's what we put in, in the proposed initial, the initial proposed plan. The next one is election, oops, sorry, goodbye, yeah, elections. And this is something that, um, you know, we do have a presidential election coming up and we don't know, we don't know where we'll be at in the pandemic, whether, whether, you know, we'll be in a second, um, wave or not. So, and this is just, this is all estimated to, uh, potentially 20,000, uh, for Plexiglas shields for, for every voting table, check-in, ballot, and help desk, uh, floor spacing mark, floor spacing markers and social distancing signs, Clorox wipes and hand sanitizers, and then just in general election supplies that, that, that may be mandated or, or things we may not think of today that we may need, uh, then. Next slide. So, well, go back, can you go back up to the last slide real quick? So keep in mind, everything I've been talking about, I kind of, uh, I kind of lost track of what is a county expense. So if you look up at the top of, of the sheet, on the right-hand side, you'll see county expense, shared expense, and municipal expense. So keep those three in mind, um, because the following slides, um, i- is an attempt to show you kind of how, uh, that is distributed, um, to the municipalities and to the county. So if you'll go to the next slide.
Aaron.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we move on, I have a couple of questions, um, in the county budget. First of all, were you on the, um, call this morning? With the Corona update with our, um, Chris and, and those folks?
Yes.
Okay, so can you? Sorry. Okay, so for those that weren't, uh, Lynn Moody shared with us that there are face, face shields, new ones that are being produced down in South Carolina. And they're only eight dollars a piece. And if you order a large quantity, it can go all the way down to four dollars a piece. So, I just thought that was very interesting from a money-saving perspective. And then, um, I've been getting, having a conversation with a pastor who's, you know, a nonprofit. And apparently a state senator told him that this money can be used for nonprofits. And I just would like you to clarify that one more time. So we're on record. And I just would like you to clarify that one more time, so we're on record.
Hold, hold on one second, I'm, I'm trying to get the screen back. What, to, to answer your question, yes, it, it can be used for nonprofits.
I thought that this was only to be used by municipalities.
Well, it, 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 it can be used, it can be used, it can be used by the nonprofits or municipalities if, if the county approves it. But the money is distributed, uh, straight to the county.
Okay.
So, you know, if, if there were, uh, you know, if we do distribute it to municipalities or, or, or nonprofits, it, it has to be, you know, it, it, it has to meet the guidelines and, and then, you know, the commissioners a- and staff, well, regardless of where, where the money, um, is spent, you know, uh, you know, can be held liable for, for how the, the money is spent.
Okay.
Aaron, can I ask you a question, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
What kind of controls do the commissioners have on this money if we agree to the plan? I've got a real problem with being held personally liable for something that I have no control over.
Yeah, d- did you want me to answer that question?
Absolutely. I need an answer before I can vote. I guess my question is, uh, I know we can't micromanage every dollar that's going to be spent, but at the same time, um, I, I'll, I'll refer back to what happened in Landis. You know, I wouldn't want to be held personally responsible for what I went on down there with the misappropriation of funds. A- and I'm, I'm just kind of gun-shy about saying, okay, fine, somebody goes out here and does something they shouldn't, they're going to come back to the commissioners and want us to be held responsible for, for whatever repayment would have to be made.
Yeah, I, you know, c- commissioner, I don't know, I, I don't know how you're, how you're not going to be, be liable, uh, based on the way the, the statute reads. You know, if, if we present this plan and, you know, we're presenting it, you know, telling you that we believe that this is spending the money correctly. And then if you ask us, you know, to provide a report to you on how it's spent, and to provide, you know, updates on, on how it's spent, then I don't know what else you can do as a commissioner.
Well, I guess what I'm, I'm asking, Aaron, is when you're starting to include the, the ten municipalities, uh, all of a sudden, we're, we're, we're really losing control over what's going on because now we're depending on each one of those municipalities to do the right thing, and that's, that's just a lot of exposure.
Not, not necessarily, uh, I, and I get what you're saying because that's a question that we have had. But, uh, we're not just giving a check to the municipalities based on population per se. The, the, the shared expense of, um, the architect, the architects will go out, uh, to each of the municipalities along with the county, and so then we'll bid out the work and the county actually can say controls the construction, but we control the purse string. So as this work is done, I mean, we're assured that the, the money that's gone out to the municipalities is spent on COVID-related items.
I, I understand that. My, my concern, I guess, is will we be able to vote each time these expenditures come up before the work starts?
Uh, one thing Aaron had talked about, um, on, um, a call I was on, was that we would ask for an inter-local agreement. Aaron, is that, is that still staying?
Y- yes, I mean, bu- okay, so, yeah, so for the money that, that goes to the municipalities, um, the, the construction or outfits, the, the money would never, they would never see the money. The county would manage the construction. So when the commissioners vote on, um, w- when you vote to go out to bid, you'll, you'll see and have in a packet what, what all the work is going to be done. So you would have control at that level to, to make sure, you know, to review it and to make sure that, that it meets, you know, the requirements as you each individually understand them. Now, the, the other money provided to the municipalities is going to require them to p- provide us a receipt, justification, and we may very well not approve some of the requests. I mean, um, I can tell you that, you, you know, that I and, and both Leslie, we're going to be very, we're very cognizant of, of this requirement, and we're going to do everything we can, to, to apply in, in the strictest sense, and to make sure that the money is, is spent appropriately. What's, what's kind of different about this money is, um, appropriately is only how they say it can be spent. So, um, you know, it's, it's, we have to interpret that, and hopefully by submitting this plan, we will get some type of feedback, or maybe not, um, uh, from the state. But Commissioner Pierce, I mean, as commissioners, y'all have the sole authority to say, you know what, we want to know, you know, the plan is okay, but, you know, I, we, at every board meeting, we want to know what's going to be spent or what has been spent. You know, if you want a list of that, I mean, you certainly, I mean, you can set any parameters that you want as a board on how you want this money, uh, spent. And staff, we are required to comply with your directive. So, I mean,
This money is for activities that take place through May the thirtieth.
And some of it's prior activity.
Well, yeah, pri- prior, but not after May the thirtieth.
No, no, after May thirtieth, through December, well, it has to be obligated, uh, i- if, if we're doing construction, the construction would have to have, we'd have to have an obligation to a contractor, uh, before December thirtieth. So this is for expenditures, um, prior and future, going, going in, going to, uh, December, uh, thirtieth.
Well, I, I'll tell you my feelings about it, is that if I'm responsible for it, it's going to be a reimbursement. It's not going to be for, we plan on building something, or we plan on doing this, but they're going to, I want something to come in that says, uh, we spent money this way, and we'd like to be reimbursed for it. Because government money is like insurance money. It's not really going to hurt anybody if you take it and spend it somewhere else.
Yeah, so, so that's a good point, and here's another interesting thing about the way this grant works, as I understand it. Once we submit this plan and sign several documents, we receive the full two-point, you know, five, what's the exact, exact amount? Two-point-five.
Two million five hundred sixty-one thousand.
Yeah. So we, you know, the minute we sign these documents and submit this plan, as I understand it, we will receive this, this amount of money, and we will be held accountable, and the board, well, essentially, the board will be held accountable, uh, and then you will hold staff accountable to make sure that every dime of it is spent appropriately, uh, wh- when we submit whatever it is they request us to submit. Or at the end of, uh, of the term, unless things change, uh, un- unless something is amended, we will be required to, to send the money back to the state.
J- Jim, if a municipal, if, if an architect goes to a municipality and says there's eighteen thousand dollars worth of work to be done here, that becomes part of the bid package that the county collects, and, uh, and the county manages that. So we're not sending the ca- we're not sending that municipality a check for eighteen grand. That check only goes to the contractor after the work's done. So we're not releasing any of those funds to any municipality. It would only go to the contractor after the work is done.
That's fine, as long as we've got control of the money. I, I want them to get money that they've spent. I want it to be spent the way that, that the state has put the requirements on it for it to be spent. I do not want anybody to have access to it until we sign off on it.
And, yeah, that's my same concern. I, I don't want this to be, you know, uh, a mayor calls you, calls up Greg and says, hey, you know, we need fifty thousand dollars for COVID relief over here. And, you know, we're like, okay, we'll put on the consent agenda, and the next thing we know, they, they spent it for something else. So as long as we have a control system, I'm fine, but I want to make sure that we know what's going on every time there's a check to be written.
Yeah, I mean, it, are y'all interested if we give you a monthly report on, on, on exactly where the money's going? Is that something you would, you would like at each meeting? Because, I mean, I, I understand, I mean, because the board, y'all, based on the statute, y'all are, are personally liable, so.
I think that'd be a great idea, Aaron, because when we're personally liable, I want to know where the money's going to.
I, I wouldn't have a problem with having it on, uh, every meeting's agenda, an update, at least to see where it's going, how it's going and where it's going, and, and I don't think that would be too difficult.
No, it's a good idea. Okay.
When it comes to you as a request, Aaron, that could just be part of our, uh, paperwork for that particular meeting. Before it's ever approved.
So I, I'd like to have the ability to vote each time it comes down, just so that we have eyes on it and we're all in agreement that this is how we want it to move forward.
Okay, I, I, I mean, I, I, I completely understand, and I, I mean, because, I mean, that, that's no problem whatsoever. We'll, we'll be glad to do that. Uh, the only, there, there's some things, um, and, and we've had a few discussions, I don't know, you know, some of the, um, when, when we request reimbursement for sick, you know, the names of, of employees or, you know, whatever the circumstance was from the municipalities, you know, we won't be able to provide the names of employees. We'll just be able to say, you know, you know, there were X number of hours, and now we will, we will, we will verify, and we can tell you, well, if, if they're legally allowed to let us, because it's their employee, you know, there, there, there'll have to be some type of, you know, that, the lawyers will have to figure that part out, but, um, other than that, e- e- every dime, uh, that's spent is public, and I, and I think the state intends on publishing all of the county's plans. And is that correct, Leslie, or is that something I'm?
I have not seen that yet.
Okay, may- maybe not, but I thought I had heard that, and if they do, we'll be able to go and see what other folks are doing, and, and there may be better ideas. And again, we can change this plan, um, at any time.
Okay. That's good to know, too.
Okay.
By the way, how, how big's your bond?
County manager doesn't, isn't required to have a bond. The finance officer and the sheriff are.
Sheriff doesn't have the ability to write checks. How, how, how well are you healed?
My, my bond is two hundred thousand.
All right, no checks over two hundred thousand, then.
So, um, the, the next slide, it, what, no, go back up to the gra- thanks. This slide is, um, if you remember the, the three columns, uh, that, that we talked about, uh, county expense, shared initiative, and then municipal. So what, what this graph does is it, is it takes all the municipalities in the county, and it takes their population, and then we create a new municipality, which is outside the city limits. Uh, and as you will see, this shows you kind of what the distribution of the population is. And the purpose of this graph is to segue into the ne- the next slide, which will kind of show you, if you can go ahead and go to the, this will kind of show you, um, the two boxes at the top, I'll talk about those in one second, but the, the, the graph you just, um, saw kind of shows you the first column population on the bottom graph. So we'll start up in what will be your left-hand top corner, shared initiative. So everything we just talked about, um, some we labeled county, some we labeled shared, um, and other we labeled municipal. So we're, we're stating approximately one million three hundred and eighty-seven thousand and eight dollars could be considered a shared initiative. Uh, for example, in EMS, the personal protective equipment, you know, we, we have met with the municipalities and told them any equipment we've provided to you in the past, there will be no charge for it, and any equipment we provide you in the future, you know, the county will be providing to you. So, you know, whether it's masks, gloves, Clorox wipes, hand sanitizer, what have you, anything they need, we'll provide to them. Um, and so that's one example of the shared initiative. And that, again, that's one million three hundred and eighty-seven thousand and eight dollars. Then to your right top corner, you municipal, um, construction and payroll, that's an estimated three hundred thousand dollars for construction, um, and one hundred thousand dollars for possible human resource expenses, which totals four hundred thousand. And on the construction, if you remember that we had the architect fees in a shared initiative. So if you go back to the left, top left-hand side and look at general government, and then if you were to scroll up, you know, um, in this PDF, you would see in general government, it has the architect fees in it, okay? So, um, now that I've explained those top two boxes, we're going to go to, uh, the bottom box. So let's just start with, um, outside the city limits. So, uh, an estimated seventy-eight thousand and ninety-two citizens, which makes up fifty-five point zero seven percent of the county population. The next, the next column, um, is total dollars allocated to Rowan County. And again, this is just for illustrative purposes, uh, to, to show you how, how the money is being, may be distributed based on the, the estimated, uh, budget numbers, is one million four hundred and ten, eight hundred and forty-three thousand. I mean, one million four hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars. And then the allocation of dollars to the shared initiative, um, that would be the percentage to the county is seven hundred and sixty-three, uh, thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. And then there's nothing at the, the municipal, because we're not receiving a part of the four hundred. That's going straight to the municipalities, or may go straight to municipalities. And then on the far right, you see the remount, the remaining dollars to county government, uh, would be seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. And, you know, some of the things we talked about, um, previously, um, you know, one, one example is the IT, uh, stuff. Now, um, let's go to Salisbury, um, and go to population, thirty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-six citizens, which is twenty-four point thirty-six percent of the county population. Okay, so the next co- column, just kind of, we'll skip over that for a second. If you look at the total dollars allocated, would be six hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-twos. And then the next number to the right, the three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twelve, that is their portion of the shared initiative. Okay, and then the, the next column, which is allocation of dollars to municipal government, that is, that, that's not based on, um, the top number. You have to go back to the one. You have to go back to the one I said we're going to skip over, which if you take the outside of the city limits population out of the equation, uh, the total municipal population is 63,708, so 54, uh, point 21% um, of that, and that shows you how much of the allocation of the dollars to the municipal governments. So, again, and as you go down per municipality, you know, you see what the, the allocation is. Again, this is, this is, this ca- the board can say, we want to do it per population, and we, we, we like the way this looks, and we want to work in this guidelines, or you can say, um, no, we don't necessarily have to do it per population, we can do it based on need. Um, that's totally up to the board. Um, regardless, I think every municipality is going to have some need, and, and some of the managers I've talked to have, 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 have pinpointed what their needs are. Kind of the purpose of this chart was just to give an illustration of, you know, for example, suppose that this money could be expen- could be used to, uh, backfill loss revenue, which it cannot be used for that, but if it could, then you might want to take, um, uh, the middle column that says total dollars allocated to Rowan County, and that might be the distribution you use to the county and then to each municipality. Um, but we can't do it that way, um, because we can't use this to supplant funds or to offset loss revenue. So, again, this is just an illustration. Um, it was shared with municipalities, and, you know, there was, when, when shared with them, I told them this is just, you know, this has not been approved by the commissioners, it has not been approved by the state, um, and it was for illustrative purposes, but, um, you know, so with that, I think that is the last slide. Yes, it is, okay. Um, if there's any questions, I'll be, I'll be happy to, to answer them, uh, to the best of my ability.
Aaron, I've got a, uh, I would guess a comment more so than a question. Um, looking at each one of the municipalities, I don't think population should be the, the, uh, equation we use. And the reason I say that is each one of them have their own town hall, each one of them have their own meeting room, and each one of them have different services they provide. Of course Salisbury being the largest has more services they provide. But if you're going to put up petitions inside the town hall, where the people come in to ask questions, pay their water bill, whatever else, you know, if it's five people a day or 50 people a day, all you need is one petition. So I, I don't see that some of these, some of these dollars that are, that are being set out there are necessary. Uh, I would rather take it that let an architect go and, and, and let's get the fact finding done first, before we start allocating any particular percentage of dollars. The other thing I have a problem with is 484,000 dollars over budget. Uh, if we're going to spend this money, let's stay in budget, because this money came to us for a particular need, and it doesn't need to be spent, uh, the county doesn't need to pony up their money i- if it's, if it's coming to us for this particular COVID need. I, I think we need to really fine-tooth this thing down tight, so that the county's not on the hook for a half a million more dollars, just because we, we got this 2.5 million to spend. No, I mean, I mean, I might be the only one that thinks that way, but that's how I'm thinking right now.
No, I, I don't anticipate us spending over what, what we're appropriating. That just, you know, kind of served us as an illustration to show that there are some needs, um, and that, that, um, you know, some of, so, some things will have to take, uh, precedence over others. I can go ahead and tell you, the technology line item, uh, Randy, um, can you pull that back up?
Yes, I will.
He may, he may not, since he's the technology director.
No, I, I flat out said during the other one that I was.
He may not want to share the.
No, I'll share it. I, I was telling you, I'm good with it. Um, I completely agree after seeing everything else, and I think that's what we've seen is really where the effort's going. Yes, I'll get that.
You know, that, um, hold on, I've got to find, that, that portion. So if you take 258, not, 970 dollars, I mean, even, you know, even the public awareness, we've already, we've already spent that. So if you take that, um, and then subtract it, can you go, um, up a slide, Randy? You subtract it from the 484. The, the, the shortfall. Can you, can you, can you take everybody back to the shortfall slide, Randy? That's, um, hold on, let's see. Okay, so if you take the technology, and, and if the board wants to cut that out completely, then that gets our shortfall to 225,190. Again, a lot of this stuff is estimates, so if you'll go down a little bit, Randy, I, I, I think in the general human resources, I think and Leslie, you can, you know, I think that's pretty, that's pretty, that, I don't think we can reduce that, um.
We, we definitely have, um, the, just the, the regular direct COVID-19 employee pay expenses. I think we'd have over half a million dollars that's eligible there. Um, we were choosing not to apply all that there with the, um, FMLA and sick pay, those are estimates based on what we've seen so far, but that's very much dependent on circumstances moving forward. We may, you know, that, that could be closer to 100,000. Um, or it could be 300,000. We, we don't know at this time.
Now, so Randy, if you'll scroll down, um, one slide. One, one more slide, you know, the, the personal protective equipment number, um, you know, that, that's a guess, um, you know.
You know, so, some of that stuff, like the FMLA, that's, that's already been spent, and we're just showing that as, as hopefully reimbursing ourselves for that. Um, I, I'm with Craig on this, where we don't need to spend a dime over what they provide, so let's just make that part of our motion, that, um, you know, we balance this budget, and, uh, it, it may be that just some of these things that we've already spent may not, I mean, they just, they just come off of the ledger there. It, it doesn't mean that it's not paid for, it's already been paid for.
A- and, and so you'll know, I'm not against the telework act, and I think that's the future of, of how we're going to handle some of these things. Infrastructure, I'm always for, but I'm just saying, if we're going to participate with the municipalities, we need to, we need to run out our funds, uh, until they're gone, and then I don't see it's our job to, to invest into the municipalities. I mean, they've got their own tax rate. If they want to do some of these things, then, then let them do it.
You know, I'd like to have an alternate, if, count, let's say that the municipalities didn't spend all the money, and we have, uh, this year, uh, in, I think July the 1st, government grants are going to be avail- available for, uh, broadband in some of the munis- on some of the county, uh, that is not widely served. Uh, could, do you think something like that would be approved by the state? Uh, if we're, if we've got all this other IT work, you know, that's available here, that, that has been done, or, or is going to be done. Um, do you think we, we could have some alternatives that might be, uh, approved if there was money left out?
We talked about that yesterday. We had a, we had a meeting, a Zoom meeting yesterday with Randy and myself and some industry folks, and, uh, we don't think that would be approved, bottom line. Has, has to be directly COVID-related. We don't think that would be approved.
We have so many kids that we're doing, uh, supposed to be doing homework, and in some parts of Western Rowan County, as an example, well, even this commissioner couldn't get through a whole meeting, the last meeting that we had. And, uh, so it, it's something that I think is very important.
Jim, that, that's something that, um, we'll be talking about, um, probably in the next day or two.
You know, if you get your server out of the barn, it would work a lot better, too.
That's where I keep the little rats that are on that whirlpool, whirl, whirligig going around all the time.
That treadmill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Aaron made me move them out of the house.
I, I just think at this point in time, I, I, I'll agree with the chairman, and we just need to make the motion to approve this based on it being balanced with what, uh, federal funds were going to come, and we'll just take it as, since we're going to get a report every meeting, we'll be able to keep a running tally on where we are, and, and at that point in time, we can start uh, deleting or, or adding to according to the monies of, of what we think is our priorities. And then that way, I think that gives us complete control over how the money's being spent, too.
I, I do want to say one thing. If, if you read, um, the information that came from the state and through, uh, the NCACC, the, the, the state passed the legislation and put the counties in charge of distributing those funds. So, um, I, I understand, uh, Craig, what you were saying. I, I, I do think it is, it is really important that we do support uh, the municipalities, um, as much as we can. The, the fact is, the, I, and I don't know what the number is, we've, we've been on Zoom calls every single day with, uh, municipal leaders, and I don't really know what expenses that they are experiencing. I think they would all agree as assumed the vast, vast of the events related to COVID. Uh, but there are some expenses that, um, that they, uh, certainly have all, uh, experienced, and there's some that they'll have ongoing. And so I think the spirit of this was that, uh, wh- where counties are, are shouldering the majority of the responsibility financially, that those be reimbursed, uh, but that also if municipalities have existing and upcoming expenses, that we, we share this with them, uh, where, where we see that, um, that there's a need and where we can. So I, I, I do, um, a- as we've had this conversation, the, the question is, are we sure that it's going to be spent in the right place? We certainly have the ability to do that, uh, through our, our architect uh, process and through our reimbursement process, and, uh, I certainly, just like all of y'all, trust Aaron and trust Leslie to make sure that all this is spent, um, in the right place, but making sure that we, uh, in the spirit of how this money was, you know, the legislature says it has to be, the money's got to be sent somewhere. So where is the easiest place uh, for the state to send it, and they trusted the counties, uh, to take that and, and to disseminate it out? So, um, the county would be reimbursed for the, the large, uh, majority of, of who has shouldered all this expense, but then in the spirit of what the, uh, legislature wanted us to do also, sharing some of that, um, with municipalities.
Greg, could you clarify something for me? The architect fees, okay, and then you've got the general construction, um, no, we got the municipal renovations and outfits. So, that first, that first general government section, um, so we're sharing the architect, and the archi- is the architect going to oversee then municipal renovations and outfits?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, um, if, if the board, you know, it, the, what, what I'm hearing is you want to, you want to, you want, you want it balanced, and you don't want it to be a dollar over what the, the, um, uh, grant award is. So i- if, if you could in the motion, if you could, if you could just, um, authorize me to, to balance it or to, to reduce it that way, that, you know, if you're saying that you want it sent one way, and then I send it with a, you know, showing there's a shortfall, that I'm not complying with the board's order. So if you could just authorize, you know, Leslie or I to, to, to get it balanced to the two-point, um,
Five, six.
Five, six, eight.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't want to speak for Aaron or Leslie, um, but I, I do think the strategy here, um, which we may not like in hindsight, uh, is that they wanted to show that there was a need. And then that need, uh, exceeded what we would be receiving, uh, from the state. I don't think the purpose, and again, um, I'm, I'm saying this as an observer that's been on, on, man, multiple calls for it seems like three years now, but I, I, I think the whole point was to say, yeah, we have significant need, um, and need exceeds the dollars, but that we really have no, we have no intention of spending one penny, um, uh, beyond that for, for this purpose, for the purpose of, of these dollars.
We could, we could pay a percentage of all the losses and then come back and reimburse them the, you know, the 20% that we didn't pay, if we had funds at the end. So, you know, we can do several things.
A- and there is, this is, there is also FEMA reimbursement, so, um, if, if all this money is, is spent, um, we still can request FEMA reimbursement, uh, so, but, but as I understand it, they want us to spend this money first, and then, you know, do the FEMA request after that.
Would that be single counties, or would the counties all be together and, and the state apply?
Uh, the way, the way FEMA, uh, reimbursement works is each, um, county and each individual municipality have the ability to request their own reimbursement for expenses.
Okay, thanks.
So under a normal, you know, um, uh, a- event where we would, uh, you know, request FEMA reimbursement, uh, this is a little different. They, they, they've created the CARES fund and, 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 you know, we've got 2,561,818 dollars, uh, that's available before we spend the FEMA money, so, um.
So are there any other questions for, um, Aaron or Leslie? And if, if not, I, I'm, I can, uh, I can voice a motion. I think what I'm hearing is that we would approve this, uh, strategy of dispersing uh, these CARE dollars with the caveat that it be balanced when it, when it is sent to, uh, the state for approval. And that, uh, at each meeting, uh, that we have, whether, uh, virtual or in person, that an update be given uh, to the commissioners. that an update be given, uh, to the commissioners. Is there anything else?
I want to instruct that Aaron and or Leslie, uh, be in charge of, of the balancing of the funds.
Okay. I mean, if you, if you wanted to, Commissioner, if you, you require dual signatures of?
I, I don't think that's necessary. I'm just saying, if something would happen that you would be incapacitated, I'd want Leslie to be able to step up and take care of it.
Oh. What are we gonna do? Are we gonna require receipts when you get them?
Oh, yes.
I mean, when you get the request? So is this after they've spent the money or?
Jim, it'd be no different than what we did the outfit out at Ellis Park. We had the architect, you know, get the contractor together, give us a price. He started the work, and when he was completed, then he submitted his bill and he was paid. And I'm, I'm assuming that's how all this will go.
Yeah, there, there will be some, you know, money that's already been spent that, that the municipalities may request we reimburse them for. And, you know, they'll either.
Have a receipt for it.
Receive our detailed memorandum, uh, with ver- verifiable information as well as a, as a, uh, a memorandum of understanding between the municipality, uh, and the counties on that. So, you know, we would, we would apprise the board, um, you know, of, of those expenses.
All right, so.
Again, I just don't want somebody to say, we've hunt, we've ordered a hundred thousand masks and we won't get paid fifty thousand dollars for that. Uh, and that mask never be ordered. So that's, again, the angle I'm coming at this from.
And I agree with you.
All right, so Carolyn, do I need to, uh, do you have my motion? Carolyn, are you there?
I am, and I did get your motion.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floors. There a second? All right, thanks.
Greg, can you just clarify the very end where Craig said about adding who has the authority to authorize the payments?
We would instruct the county manager and the, and the assistant county manager to, uh, be in charge of balancing, uh, this plan.
Yeah, it's and/or, right?
Yes.
But the county commissioners are gonna approve the mon- the requests that come in, correct?
Right.
All right, uh, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You opposed. All right, thank you, Aaron, um, and Leslie. It's been a tremendous amount of work, I know. All right, we've got a couple other items, uh, let's see here, we added in the item two A, which was the, um, for human resources requesting to create two additional custodial positions as a result of increased volume of custodial needs. And, um, I know we were on a Zoom meeting with the, um, judges from the courthouse. Uh, they've got some requirements there, uh, so we're gonna have to deal with that. And then, um, an overall additional um, need, and of course, we need to do this because we, uh, we froze all hiring. So Aaron, is there anything you wanna add to this?
No, we're just, uh, you know, create two new positions, uh, and it, you know, we anticipate that even though it wasn't in the, the plan, because the, the plan, um, uh, had, have, we have not updated the plan since the position, uh, issue arose, but it will be something that we anticipate that the, 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 uh, uh, coronavirus relief fund will pay for. Um, and, and once the need is no longer there, what we would eliminate those positions.
Okay, so do you just need a motion, uh, to pass, uh, to move forward with, um, the human resource request?
Yeah, just to create two, two new positions.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Then we've got, um, I make a motion that we schedule a meeting for June one, twenty twenty at one P M. For the purpose of holding a budget work session, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And, uh, make a motion, we schedule a public hearing for June one, twenty twenty at six P M. To receive citizen input uh, regarding the proposed budget. The board would hold its regular commission meeting at three P M., followed by a recess. We will not adjourn. The board will reconvene at six P M. And conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed budget. The county attorney has provided, uh, the following. Uh, I, I hereby move that Rowan County schedule the public hearing for the proposed twenty-twenty-one fiscal budget. Uh, fiscal year budget on Monday, June first, twenty twenty at six P M. Subject to the public hearing comment period remain- remaining open until five o'clock P M. On Friday, June fifth, twenty twenty. In order to give everyone an opportunity to make comments known to the board, uh, the length of comment for each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board. The comments should be restricted to the subject of hearing as advertised. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You opposed, all right.
Now, Greg.
I, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the, the public testimony for the budget, is that gonna be done through Zoom or is it gonna be just emails or how is that all gonna work?
Um, my understanding is it can be anything, um, whether it be email. Uh, Carolyn, you might wanna chime in here. Folks could call in to your office.
They will actually publish the link for the public hearing, and people can participate remotely as they can with this meeting. And we also will set up an email address where they can email their comments in through the time of the public hearing, and they can also have an additional time period as the motion stated through five P M. On June fifth to provide comments on the proposed budget.
Okay, so those would be mainly email then?
They can email. If they were to call, I would take their comments and share them with the board. But they can participate remotely in the public hearing process and also electronically by email.
Very good, thank you.
Good, uh, could citizens also contact, uh, commissioners for comments? I don't, it's a technical question, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
I- if they do, it should be in a format that you can forward to the other commissioners.
Okay. All right, anything else? Thank you guys for, uh, being part of the special call meeting, for everyone that's attended, all your work, Aaron and Leslie and Randy.
Yeah.
Um, those guys are really doing a tremendous amount of work, so thank you. If you've not made your, um, appointment with, uh, Aaron yet to, to go through budget stuff, please do that. Uh, um, say a prayer for Mike as he's away from his family and pray for his family for their safety as he's gone. Uh, we appreciate his service. And I think that's all I've got. Anyone have anything else? All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
We're moved.
Well, we have four, four motions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Be well.
You too.